Special meeting of the Rialto City Council. And it is also City Council for the City of Rialto, acting as successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the Rialto Utility Authority and the Rialto Housing Authority. So, Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Robertson?
Present.
Mayor Protem Scott?
Present.
Councilmember Tre Hill?
Present.
Councilmember Andy Carazella?
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vale?
Present.
City Manager Marcus Fuller?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I will ask if our council would like to lead us into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, and be happy to. You have four items on your closed session agenda for this evening. The first is a threat to public services or facilities. Second is a conference with real property negotiator. The third is a conference with legal counsel with regard to potentially three items of litigation. And your fourth item is a conference with your labor negotiator with regard to the bargaining groups listed on the agenda. That's it. I don't believe there are any public comments, so we're ready to go into closed session.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
So moved?
Moved by Councilmember Tre Hill and seconded by Mayor Protem Scott. We are now into closed session. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May 26. This is a special meeting of the City Council, and it covers the City of Rialto also acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the Rialto Utility Authority and the Rialto Housing Authority. It's 6:41 PM. And Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Robertson?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ed Scott?
Present.
Councilmember Rafael Tre Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Andy Carazella?
Present.
City Treasurer Ed Correa?
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vale?
Present.
And City Manager Marcus Fuller?
Here.
And let the record reflect for the entire meeting and also closed session that Councilmember Perez was absent.
Thank you. All right. We will now go to pledge of allegiance, and I would ask if everybody would stand and join Mayor Protem Ed Scott in the pledge of allegiance, and then remain standing while Pastor Harry Bratton for Greater Faith Grace Bible Church leads us in invocation.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of light, I pray to know over this council meeting tonight that you bring light to all the issues that they're facing tonight. Guide them by your spirit, oh God. Help them find great solutions, ideas, Lord, strategies and wisdom to do to every issue that confronts them tonight, and where there's sometimes not clarity, causing the pause to think through it and look for the right solution that's for the good of this entire sitting also here. We thank you, Lord, for the council members, Madam Mayor, and all their hard work and diligence that they do day in and day out, provide the best service possible to this city and all its members, Father. I pray that you bless them and keep them. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. The next item will be City Attorney would like to report on closed session.
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor. You had four items on your closed session this evening. First was a threat to public services or facilities. You received a brief briefing from the police chief. There was no reportable action on that item. Next, you had a conference with your real property negotiator. You gave direction to the city manager, but there was no other reportable action. Finally, or next, you had a conference with your legal counsel with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. You did give direction, but there was no reportable action. And finally, you had a conference with your labor negotiators. There was no reportable action on that item. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item that will be is presentations and proclamations. And before we go to that, I just would like to make a general statement. One, I hope that as we close this evening, we will definitely close in memory of all those who unfortunately lost their life, the children, 19 and two adults in Valadeo, Texas, Valadeo, Texas, I'm sorry. But also, I wanted to take this opportunity, just in case people are concerned or wonder something's different. Out of abundance of caution, not because of that incident, but at our last council meeting, we had a number of people who chose to speak during public comments, and they are entitled to it. But we do need to keep some level of decorum and order when we are having public comments. There was quite a sense of agitation or irritation. And, you know, I think we agree it's probably best to err on side of caution, and so we've asked for, to put in temporarily metal detector section for everybody that's coming in so that we can make sure we all stay focused and understand that this is a public setting and a public venue. And we've also asked our law enforcement to be present with us so that we can continue to keep the order that we need to keep in our council chambers. This is beginning to be a very volatile situation, and we're here, as local elected officials, to conduct the business of the City of Rialto. And there's times when things, people want answers, but public comment is for you to express your comments, but not to necessarily expect that somebody is going to immediately respond to whatever you feel you're asking from the podium. So I just wanted to make that note now. And we will have, continue to have public comment and any presentations or proclamations. So, Madam City Clerk, was there anyone who had a presentation or proclamation? I see nothing that's on the agenda. Councilmember Tre Hill?
Yeah, I'd like to close. Carter High School student who recently passed away, and his name is Juan Salcedo from Carter High School. I just want to see if we can also close in his adjournment. He passed away after...
I'd like to take an opportunity, last Tuesday, not this past Tuesday, but the Tuesday before, I was made aware that Mr. Leroy Parker, who has been a resident of our community and a veteran, he passed away after having us experiencing a massive stroke. However, he was able to go to the hospital, family was able to get there with him. He went into surgery and did not survive through the surgery. And that, so he passed Tuesday before, not this past Tuesday. And so I just want to send our prayers to the family, to one of our commissioners, Ms. Brenda Parker, who is one of our Human Relations Commissioner. And Mr. Parker also worked in our community-based organizations assisting veterans with getting whatever things and resources and services they need to get from the VA. And so we hopefully will close in memory of them as well. And I see Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to close tonight's meeting in memory of John J. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez was a resident of Rialto since the 1950s. He passed away at the age of 94. Mr. Sanchez raised four children in our community. He was born in California. He was a good friend of mine and a great person. He had worked for State or Brothers Markets as a produce buyer for 40 years. So my condolences to his family, and may he rest in peace.
All right. Thank you. Any others? With that, I will now ask the City Clerk if there's anybody who's expressed a desire to speak during oral communications.
No, I have no question.
You have not? All right. Then that next item, is City Council to consider removing or continuing any item on the agenda, or if there's anything that anyone needs to note that they need to abstain? Now is the time?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I will be abstaining from F3 due to a conflict of interest regarding my business at the Renaissance Marketplace.
E? E? I don't have an F.
We don't have any.
E3?
Yes, E.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, anyone? If not, good.
I just wanted to acknowledge E4.
E4?
It's just a change of operating hours.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so...
Can you have, cut your mic on, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to have this part of a public announcement of some of our changing hours, and I'll pass it on to our director.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. So, item E4 is basically discussing, changing the hours of operation for the Fitness and Aquatic Center. Currently, Monday through Friday, the center is open from 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM, then it closes from 1:00 to 3:00 for cleaning, and then it opens up again from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Fridays, it closes at 8:00 PM, and then Saturday, it's open half-day. What we're requesting to do is open up the 1 to 3 timeframe for the public to use to do their exercise and close the fitness center at 8:00 PM. We're not getting very much attendance, and we'll use the closing time for the cleaning.
Thank you. Thank you. Right. Anything else? If not...
I'm before approval? With the notes?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Tre Hill and seconded by Mayor Protem Scott with an exemption on E3 for Councilmember Carazella. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on now to our first tab, tab item number one.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. This evening, I'm here to request to conduct a public hearing for the placement of liens for delinquent refuse collection accounts for the fourth quarter of 2021. On April 26, 2022, the City Council approved the request to set the public hearing for this evening, May 26, to review, consider the placement of liens for those on the proposed address list included as attachment one. Those properties were noticed 21 days prior to this evening's public hearing. At this time, I'd ask if you would consider any testimony from any of the public, and then adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of the liens.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing, and if there's anyone who desires to speak, please step forward on the matter. Hearing none, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved?
And it's been moved and...
Second.
Moved by...
I think maybe there's somebody who wants to speak, though.
All right. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Hello?
Hello.
I got this letter from the trash company. My tenant apparently is not paying for the trash bill, and they're trying to put a lien on my business or my building. And we are waiting for court. I have a court date for a tenant to be evicted, hopefully maybe June 20. And I've been going to court for past two years to get this tenant out of my building. It's for 220 South Date Avenue.
220, 220 South Date?
South Date Avenue. So I'm requesting for the lien to hold until we get the tenant out and hopefully get him to pay for his bills. I don't know how to get him to pay for anything. He's not paying for rent, he's not paying for water, power, trash, nothing.
Okay. I do believe...
Let me suggest this. We've got Burt Tech representative here. Why don't we hold that one address from the list and work out an arrangement separately?
Thank you. And I was gonna also mention that perhaps if she's commercial owner and owns the building, she may be able to apply for some of our assistance.
Well, I tried to apply for the assistance, but they're saying the tenant have to apply for it.
That's true.
And the tenant is not cooperating at all. He hasn't paid me for two years over $150,000 in rent.
Well, I think, again, our city manager and them could assist with understanding the situation, but...
Yeah, I guess my question, if she's ultimately responsible for the bill, why can the tenant only apply for it?
That's a great question. So we'll look at that, you know, that requirement.
Because she is responsible for the bill.
I'm also trying not to pay for all his bills because I'll encourage him to stay longer and not pay for anything. I am trying to find a way to get him out of the building so I could sell the building.
Okay. Councilmember Tre Hill?
There is a HUD requirement. It has to do with HUD requirements and the way that all these programs were established. Because I've looked into it myself with similar situations in other cities, and it all comes back, not just with the programs here, with the CARES program because of the HUD regulations, but they copied it at the state level, so they have the same situation where they need to have tenant cooperation. It's very unfortunate.
It's the HUD regulation.
But is there not ARPA money available for...
Yeah, so the Rialto Assistance Program is really locally funded, which was made available through the funds from ARPA. So I'll look at that, because that's a great point, because a business owner having tenants not cooperating should have access to those funds. So we'll look at that.
And one more thing. I know the government pays for the landlords, for homeowners, the ones that are landlord for those type of tenant, but there is no help for commercial owners that their tenant is not paying. So I'm wondering if there is a way that, I don't know who should we contact, who's in charge of all these decisions that they made, that the homeowners are allowed to get that kind of help, the landlords for property, but not for commercial property. So what can we do to solve that problem, not just for me? I'm sure there's a lot of... I'm sure there's a lot of commercial landlords that are hurting.
Did you apply for SBA money?
For SBA.
Small business.
Small business, emergency money?
For a loan?
If you're a landlord on a commercial property, you can get SBA money, emergency assistance money for rent.
$10,000?
Uh, no, I I know people have gotten as much as $50,000.
They they said it's not for for rental. It's if you have a business in a city of any city, I guess.
No, it's actually commercial, any commercial building.
There's a few different, there's a few different programs, so.
And SBA said they're they're running out of money and this the tenant owing over about $150,000 for two years not non-payment.
Okay, well, I think to the original request, we will pull the lien on the water and then I think through the city manager's office. And I don't know where the deputy is, maybe he's outside. We could further talk with you about some of the other programs that are available and make sure that there's some avenues that you should be able to pursue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Where's your? Hopefully, I was going to see if the city deputy city manager was. Okay, there, I see him there. All right, so anyone else that was, I guess, did did you have to have the notice of her wanting to speak?
No, it's a public hearing, so she just came up. No, I don't have it, I don't have any notice.
Oh, okay, because I saw it with in her hand, I guess.
That was the letter that she received from Burt Tech.
Got it. All right, any other comments? If not, I think we had a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Treheal and seconded by Mayor Protem Scott. Any objections, hearing none, it's closed. Discussions, you guys, comments?
With with the exception of that one address on Date Street, I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
It moved by Councilmember Treheal and seconded by Mayor Protem Scott to proceed with the liens, with the exception of removing 220 South Date Avenue. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries on to tab number two. And then this is going to be presented by our finance director, Ms. Catherine Stevens. Hello.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, we're here to conduct a public hearing on the city's fiscal year 2022-2023 proposed annual budget and hopefully approve and adopt the associated resolutions. So I do have a quick overview. So previously, we discussed, we had a session on the proposed general fund and then the all funds. So just to quickly go back over, for the proposed general fund, with the proposed budget for fiscal year '22 and '23, we're looking at a projected unrestricted fund balance of a little bit over 8.5 million with a total reserve balance of 80.7 million. For the proposed budget, we have total revenue proposal of 134 million, 134.7, and total expenses of 130.6. And that's for the general fund. There were proposed personnel changes in the fiscal year '22-23 budget. Just to briefly go or quickly go over them, for the Community Development Department, there was a development services specialist being requested, an office specialist, a permit technician for engineering, a senior's plans examiner for building, for the Community Services Department, three facility maintenance assistants for the Fire Department, an emergency medical service specialist, the senior admin analyst, an administrative assistant, and accounting technician. And for the IT department, a new IT supervisor. For the Maintenance and Facilities Department, an equipment mechanic, two facilities maintenance technicians, six field service workers. And for the Police Department, a property and evidence technician, crime analyst assistant, police corporal, police sergeant, and police officers. There is also two positions that have been added, and these are just updates. For the Engineering Service Department, two engineering managers. One would provide management over our CIP program and one would manage over the land development area within the department. Just to briefly go over the incomplete budget with all of the funds for fiscal year '22-23 proposed, we proposed a total revenue of 234.2 million, a little bit more than that. And for the revenue, there were some decreases from '21-22. Our revenue from other agencies, which details into our special revenue funds, there is a deduction there as well as deductions within our capital project funds, our internal service funds. That deduction primarily being for the reclass from our fleet maintenance, our building maintenance, and our IT department into the general fund. And also the deduction in the debt service fund area. And that was due to our OPEB transfers. Those are one-time items. In reference to the expenses for fiscal year '22-23 for all of the funds, we have a projected for the budget for 220.1 million. The decreases primarily are in our special revenue funds and that's due to one-time grant expenditures that happened throughout fiscal year in '21-22. The enterprise funds have a reduction and that was due to one-time capital improvements that occurred in '21-22. And we had also a reduction, it'll be a reduction in the internal service funds and expenses. And that's due to the reclass of those three departments into the general fund. So just to briefly go over our GAN limit. Right now, we are at our GAN limit and that's at 97.3 million. Of course, that GAN limit, we had to do a revision of our '21-22 GAN limit and that is one of the resolutions that is also being proposed today to revise that limit, taking into account the years in the past where our most advantageous rate for our GAN limit was not used. So today, we're recommending, of course, we're doing the the public hearing to conduct a public hearing and also to approve the listed resolutions, which is to revise our appropriations limit for fiscal year '21-22, establish our appropriations limit for fiscal year '22-23, amend our capital improvement program for the '22-23 proposed capital expenditures, approve the Rialto Utility Authority '22-23 proposed budget, approve the City of Rialto '22-23 budget, approve the Successor Agency fiscal year '22-23 budget, approve the Rialto Housing Authority '22-23 budget, and also adopt the fiscal year '22-23 citywide classification and compensation plan.
As we noted in the, sorry, as we've noted in the agenda, this is a public hearing on the budget. And so I don't know, Madam City Clerk, have you had anyone who has expressed an interest in speaking on the budget items?
No.
All right. And I don't know if there's anyone else. If not, seeing anyone in the audience, I would entertain a motion to.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor, I mean, the council, excuse me, Treheal and seconded by Councilmember Carazella. She didn't turn your mic off. That's okay. Any objections, hearing, motion?
Madam Mayor, I had a question, clarification. So when you stated.
Well, let me close the public hearing and then we will open it for all of us to have questions.
Okay.
This was more for the public's benefit. No objections, closing the public hearing, hearing none, that public hearing is closed now. It's just a city treasurer.
Clarification, when you were reading off the recommendations on item three, you said amending the '22-23 capital improvement program?
Yes.
Right, but it says here 22 to 26.
Let me see. One moment.
Five-year capital improvement.
Is that just a typo?
We are amending the '22-26 capital improvement program for the items projected in the '22-23 budget.
You originally said '22-23. Okay, very good, thank you. That was just needed clarification on that.
Any, Councilmember Treheal, you have your light on?
Yeah, I want to know if there's a way that we could kind of squeeze in the UAL, the unfunded accrued liability. I get that there's some plans to kind of address that in the budget in November as we start making kind of updates. But I, for me, as we kind of continue on and not really have any kind of solid plan for it, in the meantime, I I'm hoping that we can make some changes here to include that UAL as part of our budget moving forward. I just, after putting so much thought into it, we've we've taken a couple years to get to this point where we're, you know, we set up obligation bond. You know, we talked about the pension trust, but to be at this point and not have $1 in the UAL, is there a possibility that we could move some money around to to address the first kind of go at it in this budget?
So the appropriated budget for fiscal year '22-23 is at the GAN limit. So if we did add that additional appropriation, we would be over the GAN limit. What we can do, however, is use rollover fund balance from the closeout of '21-22 and we can use those funds to address the unfunded liability, the same as we did in the past fiscal year.
And how much is that that we're talking about?
So right now, we would have, based on the budget, we would have unrestricted amount of 8.5 million.
I'm sorry, would you say it again? What was the amount?
It's 8.5 million.
We we put 5 million in OPEB. Is it possible to put five of that into the UAL?
It is, just not as a part of the proposed budget because of the restrictions of the GAN limit. That is something that we could do after we finish our audit and we actually roll over unused revenue to the next fiscal year.
Okay.
So there's no possibility of putting it in in this fiscal year? Is that what you're explaining to me?
As an initial appropriation from the initial sales, from the initial revenue for this budget, we're at that limit. It would have to be used from rollover unrestricted funds. And that, we we only get that amount after we close this year. So we'll be closing our year, August 30th is when we start closing our fiscal year for '21-22. And any additional revenue that comes in that is unused and is not utilized with an encumbrance, with an encumbrance or a purchase order, we could roll over into fiscal year '22-23 and then allocate those funds.
Is it possible to split OPEB so that we could have at least something in UAL in this budget? And then do the, and then we could always just catch up with OPEB in the next round with the UAL?
Yes.
So we can at least have something. I I just, it's hard for me to kind of move forward after all these years and not have something accounted for from all of the work that staff has has done to try to get us to this point.
I understand. Well, right now, this current year has a unused fund balance amount of 4.1 million. The only issue is that GAN limit, adding that additional appropriation when we're already at the limit.
Okay. It seems as though it's a matter that I don't think we could address or make the change right now while we're trying to adopt the budget.
Correct.
I think you've identified potential sources where we could come back and maybe do it, not only the fund balance when we do it August 30th, but you did say that there's some unrestricted that we possibly could.
Correct.
Make the decision in our next council meeting. But Mayor Protem, he had.
I I too am concerned about this. We weren't able to do what we intended to do to try to reduce the UAL and our unfunded liability. I I hear what you're saying, but I think I need a commitment for me to vote on this tonight that we will take whatever the rollover is, or at least a certain amount of that rollover, and put it towards unfunded liability. We've got to start addressing the unfunded liability.
Okay.
Do you want to respond, mister?
I'm sorry, yes, that would be, we would be obviously recommending the use of those one-time revenues because as we know, we have vacancies with salary savings and unused expenditure budget, you know. So we will be doing that full audit and bringing it forward as soon as it's completed in the September, October timeframe. And as I did last year, recommending these, you know, liabilities as a priority. Since we did put 10 million towards OPEB this year, I would recommend that whatever we have, the chunk of it goes to the UAL this time.
Okay, as long as we have a commitment that that's what we're going to do, I'm good with this.
Okay.
And I would just add to that, make the request that when we do take that action, I'd like to get a status update as to where we are with the actions that we had put in with the obligation bonds and the pathway that we did put the effort in and just know where we are.
Okay.
Also, if it's possible to put, to bring back the structuring for the pension trust as well. I know it's, is it a process that we have to go through?
Yes, so I'm working with the investment team and and finance staff to bring that to the next meeting in June is the actual investment policy for that Section 115 trust so that when you do put money in, we know how we're going to invest it.
Any other questions, comments?
I had another question.
Senator?
Yes, thank you. So in addressing this, along with the UAL, is also with the ending fund balance, can we note somewhere where what contribution we're making to the economic reserve? So that we maintain the per ordinance?
Yes, so per the ordinance and it's in the staff report, we did up the economic reserve to the 35.5 million, so we did address that. You're welcome.
You have a question? Not? Entertain a motion to.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Scott and seconded by Councilmember Carazella. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, motion will carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to tab item three, Acting Chief Parks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Tonight with your COVID update, we bring news that the COVID numbers are starting, the viral load we're seeing in the water tables starting to level off after the uptick we saw post Easter with the get-togethers, we had Easter. So the numbers are trickling back down, although Omicron does continue to, you know, present a problem with the continued mutations. Now, hospital rates remain low in the county, less than 50 hospitalizations. So we're not seeing the health effects we saw early on with Delta and and Omicron early on before the, you know, Christmas break. Some direction we received and took action on from the last council meeting are give kudos to Cynthia and her team for establishing now three county testing sites in Rialto, all which will be free to Rialto residents. And we're going to have the Carl Johnson site, which we will continue the partnership with the county through September 30th. We will have the Bonneville site, you know, continue to be open, which we've had since January. And now the Jerry Eve site will be open. Both the Jerry Eve sites and the Bonneville sites will be open Monday through, or seven days a week, which is an increase for our residents. Just want to say thank you to the city attorney's office for helping us execute those contracts. They created the accountability and transparency where. They created the accountability and transparency we're looking for in those agreements. I also want to take my hat off to Cynthia and her team, her army of kids. They've been able to pass out over thirty thousand test kits and over five hundred kit baskets to our seniors in those senior residents, which is amazing. We've now handed out thousands of simple and N95 masks. And we have secured PPE hand sanitizer, test kits, and N95s to be available at the city doors. We have them at city hall, we have them at PD's, have been a distribution site, the fire department has kits available for distribution. And the city clerk has continued her outreach, both in office and at our farmers markets. We have plans to have COVID kits and other PPE available at our city events. We had kits available at the Run With The Rung. We plan on having them at the Men's Health Fair coming up and, you know, obviously our Fourth of July event this summer. So with the Omicron continuing to be, you know, pesky and, and continuing the mutations, we would certainly continue, recommend that we continue the local emergency and happy to take any direction or comment from City Council.
Okay, great. Thank you for the information. Any members have any questions or comments on the item?
I have a question. Are, are sites linked to the county SBCOVID, SBCOVID.gov?
So the county, the county sites are for vaccinations and for testing. I don't believe they are, Cynthia, unless you have an update on that. I don't believe they're linked for, for testing, but they are for vaccinations. But once they get in the CalVac system, that's all tied into a central repository for the statewide.
Is it possible to have some type of announcement on the county websites that for Rialto residents, that they have these two extra sites to go to?
We can certainly make that request through the county.
I, I just want to get the word out as much as possible. I know our residents, the first thing they do to try to get a county task is to go to the website. And I just want to make sure that they know that there's more opportunities out there other than just the Carl Johnson Center.
That's a great point. Cynthia and I spoke this week about updating our digital billboards and some broader signage around the city and unifying our central, or our social media outreach. So appreciate that input.
Thank you.
I, I just have one question on the vaccination site for the Grace Vargas Senior Center. I was wondering, did they change the hours? Because it seemed as though they were longer. They were running at least until six, but I notice now it's four PM.
Yes, nine to four, ma'am, on the, on all of the county sites.
But my question was, did they reduce their hours? I thought they had stayed open longer.
They, they, when it originally started, they were there till about seven PM. And then based off the amount of activity they've been receiving, they kind of scaled it back to four PM. But I'm sure if we begin to see an increase, they will reach out and ask if they can extend and we'll be ready to accommodate.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Treheal?
Sorry, you just got me on this. There's a big campaign around booster shots. Are they also doing booster shots for our residents for this next round?
Yes, they are, sir. And I would also like to remind while we're here that on Monday with the holiday, the county sites will all be closed for vaccination and for testing. But our local sites that, that we're partnering with will be open on Monday at Bonneville and, and at Jerry Eve's.
Okay, so is this just to receive an update and confirm, do we need action?
With the motion to continue the local emergency, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll, so moved? Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Treheal and seconded by Councilmember Karazos to continue. Any objections? Hearing none, it's passed. Thank you. Now, tab four, and I believe as city manager, you'll be presenting this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. This is a request to start a process to modify the community facilities district that you previously created for what was then called Al Ranch Overdy, but is now the River Ranch Community by Lennar Homes. The CFD was funded in part to cover the cost of public improvements. And at the time it was established, the total bonded indebtedness was forty million dollars. With rising costs of construction, Lennar Homes has come forward and requested us to consider modifying the CFD so the total bonded indebtedness can increase to fifty million to cover the anticipated cost of construction. The overall special tax rate cannot exceed the city's policy of two percent. And the reason that this increase in the bonded indebtedness can occur is because the cost of housing has gone up and the tax rate is established on the sales price of the house. So I know there's representatives here, if you have any questions. But this would be, to approve a reimbursement agreement to engage with the two consultants that would work on the documents to set up the modification of the CFD. But it's your discretion whether to pursue that and move forward. And this action, as I mentioned, would not approve it, but would allow us to move forward with the consultants to do the work to, to bring forward eventually later this summer, the action to approve the change with the CFD. So with that, that completes my report.
I don't, did anyone have a question, Councilmember Karazos? Did you have a question on it? Nope. Councilmember?
Move approval.
I have a question. Just clarification, the two identify consultants that we would, there would be reimbursement. Was that something we selected or is that-
They, they were the consultants previously selected and worked on the CFD. So that one is Norton Rose Fulbright as the financial advisor, and then Webb Municipal Finance for, as the engineer. And so since they were involved with the first one, it made sense to keep them engaged in this one.
Okay, that was a question I had. So I had a motion by Councilmember Treheal and a seconded by Mayor Protem Scott. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Tab five. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. The item before you this evening is the consideration of a word of contract to RP Landscape and Irrigation for grounds maintenance services at the city parks and facilities. These sites include city public parks, including janitorial services at twenty, twenty-seven public restrooms and thirteen city facilities. On April twenty-second, the city released a request for bids to address the needs of the community and comments that were received regarding the previous contract and scope of services. Staff adjusted the mandatory service requirements and scope of work within certain areas with this new RFP. This includes items such as power washing of all shelters, including park benches, picnic tables, and play equipment weekly. Park restroom maintenance and trash pickup twice per day on Saturdays and Sundays. On May twelfth, the city received five, received five bids. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder was, bid was submitted by RP Landscape and Irrigation in the amount of four-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-four dollars. Staff recommends the city council award an agreement with RP Landscape and Irrigation, which would, the initial term would begin on July first. And thank you, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, as well as a representative from RP Landscaping.
Okay. I don't know if any of the members have questions, but I do have something I would like to raise in context of something recently that's come up. And I noticed here we, we talk about GO2-2-27, as we often tie this to guiding principles under our general plan. It says to provide a variety of park facilities that meet the diverse needs and interests of the community. And as I read this, I think this company, this one will be responsible for handling the park facilities. Question, I thought, in terms of equity, what do we often provide in the facilities? Are they gender neutral or are there men and women's facilities? And what are some of the accommodations in the facilities?
So there's, there's a mixture in the restrooms, depending on if it's single stall, then it would be gender neutral. And if it's a multiple, multiple stall restroom, then it would be identified as a single-sex use.
Okay, and is there any other services or items that are provided in the facilities other than the seat covers and the hand washing? What about anything that pertains to specialties of our community, especially gender related?
Not to my knowledge. So it, it's basically just soap and what you described earlier, Mayor.
Okay. I think I'd like us to look into that as it relates to the services that we can make available to our community. I, just as I read this, I thought about that. And maybe sometimes we could look at it more proactively before we have a community group bring up the point that there are some, there is not, how can I say? There are some, some needs that sometimes are different than others, so. Anybody else have any comments? You have your light on?
Yes, thank you.
Take the motion or some, oh, go ahead.
Question?
Yeah, so this might be for Cynthia. So it shows that we are, that this contract will cover the, the trash pickup. How are we handling the, the shelter rentals right now? Can you give me a overview of that?
So right now, we, I have two part-time parks maintenance staff scheduled on the weekend. And they help with any additional trash pickup that needs to happen and additional cleanup from the shelter rentals. One of the things that we are working alongside with the commission is starting to put together a proposal to bring forth for council for implementing deposits. So families know and understand that it's required to clean up after themselves, so we can deal with some of these issues. Part of this contract really does address, though, the, the trash pickup multiple times at specific high-use parks like Joe Sampson and Frisbee, so that we can continue to mitigate some of those issues, along with increased pressure washing, which is once a week versus the once a month that I think previously was in place. So we are trying to address it from all angles, so we can make sure we're providing quality resources to our community.
Okay, yeah, and that's, that's where, where I was going with this. So right now, I've noticed that, that a lot of the shelters, I don't know if they're being rented or not rented, but there's excessive trash that some of them leave. So I think the quicker we get a deposit set up, we're, we'll be able to at least have them, because they have a party on Saturday and it's, it's a mess up until Monday when someone shows up. So I'd really like to make sure that we get a hold of that and that we have clear direction as to when they're renting the shelters, what exactly they're allowed to. I mean, I don't know, maybe we can dictate exactly, because some people are just leaving tons of trash.
Yeah, with the deposit proposal that we'll be bringing forward for you to approve, it will also consist of a checklist on what is required in order to get your deposit back. And part of that is going to be taking a picture with your phone to show us that your area is clean. And our parks crew the next morning will be able to verify that as well for me, to say, yeah, they're good, they're good to go.
Yeah, and, and this may sound like I'm just being picky, but most of the time, they put up tape with a happy birthday and nobody bothers to remove that. So in six months, there's a hundred different tapes up there. So I want to make sure that we're really, if they're not picking it up and we took their deposit, that we come around and that we, we take care of getting all that tape removed and making sure that they, they stay clean. Because like you said, Sampson and Frisbee and all of our parks are, if we stop taking care of them, then the community starts not caring about the parks as well. So I want to make sure that we have a really detailed program for that. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Treheal?
When is, when is most of this work happening? Is it at night work?
No, so my parks, my two part-time guys are here early in the morning. They start about six AM and they leave at four-thirty. But the current landscape maintenance contract is also there in the morning. So my goal is to have the landscape maintenance, he starts off. And then the parks maintenance crew goes around just to verify that the restrooms are open and there wasn't anything left behind. Or if, if they got, if the landscape maintenance contractor got stuck at a park somewhere else, my team can address it there. And then they'll be back to do a sweep-through in the middle of the day to make sure that there aren't any issues. They've also been really helpful with addressing people trying to hijack somebody else's rental and decreasing some of our issues there. But this new contract's really going to help us address some of those issues that we've been having. Our park rentals have really skyrocketed since COVID. I'm not sure if you guys saw or if you were aware from our social media posting, but during the Easter weekend, every, every shelter that was available in our city to be rented was rented. And holiday weekends are the worst. We definitely come back to two or three times more of the regular trash that we have. And it's something that the team is aware of and we're going to try to continue to mitigate, so.
And, and wondering if you can make the introduction to SWAG as well? So if they see homelessness at our facilities, that they're able to get, get them the resources they need to-
Absolutely.
To get help. Thank you.
Mr. City Treasurer? Well, City Treasurer has-
Yes, I think it should be noted that the dollar amount on the agenda is not the same as it is on the staff report. I think the numbers are transposed. On the staff report is four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-two-zero-four and on the agenda, it's four-eighty-six-two-zero-four.
Thank you.
The number's backwards.
Okay, so duly noted, sure's the department staff and the city manager will make that clerical correction. And with that, I think I had somebody was motioning and second.
A second.
I believe Councilmember Karazos, you, you motioned. Councilmember Karazos motioned it and Councilmember Treheal second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. And now, Mr. Sullivan again, you have the next one.
Good evening again. On April twenty-second, the city released and published a request for bids for landscape maintenance services to LMDs, Parkway's, and Median Islands. On May twelfth, the city received four bids. The lowest responsible and responsive bid was submitted by RP Landscape and Irrigation. However, RP requested to withdraw their bid due to, due to a mathematical error in their submittal. After reviewing the remaining proposals, staff found that Willowbrook was non-responsive. Therefore, staff recommends that city council reject all bids received in response to the RFP and authorize staff to rebid, rebid in the next fiscal year. The current provider of these services is Inland Empire Landscape. Their agreement has one potential remaining year of the maximum five-year term. To ensure the city continues to receive landscape maintenance services in the upcoming fiscal year, staff recommends exercising the final optional year extension of the current agreement. Staff will continue to closely monitor the services provided by Inland Empire to ensure that all requirements of the agreement are fulfilled. This includes the proper maintenance frequencies and standards, as well as the continued replanning of all missing or dead plant material. Thank you, and this concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions, as well as a representative from Inland Empire.
All right, thank you. You have your light on, Councilmember Treheal?
No, okay.
Any other, not?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Scott and seconded by Councilmember Treheal. Any objections? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're on to tab number seven, and that will be with our chief of police, Mark Kling.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem, members of the council. Tab seven is asking you to authorize a purchase of sixteen Motorola radios. The numbers are in your staff report, along with fifty-four handheld-held Motorola radios and there are further descriptions in the report for Motorola Solutions. So at your March ninth, twenty-twenty-one council meeting, if you remember, you, you have already approved the purchase of the radios over a five-year purchase plan. So this is just year two of that plan. On the sixth of January, two thousand and twenty-one, the bids were, were sent out through Planet Bid. There were two vendors. One of the vendors is Motorola Solutions. They were three-hundred-thousand dollars less than the one bidder. So we reached out to Motorola Solutions and asked if they would stay, still remain consistent with that price that they sold to the radios last year. They agreed to that. So budget's already approved for this report, or I'm sorry, for this purchase. We recommend that council authorize the purchase of-
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Scott.
And just so you know, Mr. Dan Leach from Motorola Solutions is here in the audience because of the contract, so.
Good, we're glad that you, that you attended. Thank you. All right, any objections? Hearing none. Chief?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and council, tab eight is requesting that council approve for the purchase of twelve. Again, it's a long description, but there, the descrip- Uh, the, again, it's a long description, but there, uh, the description of these tactical night vision devices are in the staff report. Uh, and we're asking for them to be purchased through the Tactical Night Vision Company.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Uh, just so you know, that vendor is in Texas, but I have them available by telephone.
Okay, and I've heard Mayor Pro Tim moved and I think Councilmember Charazellus returned in time to second it. Uh, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. And now we're on to tab number six and I believe you're going to, uh, are you presenting that?
Yes.
City manager?
Uh, tab nine.
Tab or something, wait a minute.
Tab nine.
Wait, wait. You, we were looking, okay, that was eight? Tab nine, I'm sorry, I said six.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. This is an item to request your approval of a final, uh, construction work authorization. Uh, it's related to rehabbing the two digesters as a wastewater treatment plant was recommended by the Water Subcommittee and the Utilities Commission. I'm happy to go into details of what digesters are, but with that, I'll, uh, complete my report.
Comment or?
I'm, I'm surprised that, uh, Dr. Hayes, Dr. June Hayes is not here tonight because she calls this her digester. So I would move approval. This is something that's desperately needed down there and it needs to be finished and repaired. And while we're, while we're on this subject, I want to wish, uh, Tom Crowley a speedy recovery.
Yes.
And I had nothing to do with it, you guys.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay.
You just wanted to join the clubs?
I think he's joining the club. At least he's in the club.
Yeah. Okay, well, there's been a, a motion to move by Mayor Pro Tim Scott, seconded by Councilmember Charazellus. Uh, Charazellus, and any objections? I just want to say yes, the Water Subcommittee recommended and I definitely concur, so no objections. We'll move. Tab number ten. And this is going to be the bundle approach, right?
Yeah, Council, the, these items, ten through fourteen are all very similar. They all have to do with adoption or amendments of M O U's. Do not require a separate vote. If you'd like to, you can bundle the staff report and your vote into one item for these.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, I, I would like to recommend that we bundle them. However, I, I do have an issue with one of the tab items, tab twelve. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmembers. What we have before you, and I will start with tab ten, is thirty-six eighty-eight with a one-year agreement beginning seven-one-twenty-two. There is no retro on that. That will actually immediately go into a new contract when it expires on the sixth thirty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-two. Tab eleven is the, uh, RFMA, the Rialto Fire Management Association. Uh, that is a two-year contract and that will, uh, begin retro seven-one-two thousand twenty-one. Uh, and the direct budget impact is one hundred and thirty-three thousand and sixty dollars. Uh, I will refrain from tab twelve as that has been pulled. Uh, tab thirteen, RPBA General Unit, uh, that is a two-year contract as well, uh, beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-one, with a nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollar, uh, budget impact. Tab fourteen includes side letters with RMMA, RCA, as well as addressing all of the executive management at-will, uh, uh, part-time, uh, unrepresented. The direct impact for tab fourteen is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, additional as part of tab fourteen, we're requesting council increase the budget of revenues to offset the total salary and benefit impact of one million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three for all units, including the represented and unrepresented. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Move approval.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Scott and seconded by Councilmember Trejo. Any objections? Uh, motion carries on all items except for tab twelve. And so you had some questions, uh.
Yes, on.
Mayor Pro Tim on twelve.
Thank you. On, on tab twelve, under the analysis discussion, under the category of preamble, you've added animal control supervisor. It's my understanding that also the IT supervisor was supposed to be added to that.
Uh, that, we have not met with the current, uh, RMMA, uh, union that, that, um, IT supervisor is currently a part of. Uh, so that has not been done, but certainly can be done without.
Okay, I, I just want to make it very clear. I am not in support of IT in the police department being integrated with IT over on this side of the street. It needs to be kept separately. It's, needs to be autonomous. People on this side of the street should not have access to IT in the police department.
Okay.
So I'm making myself very clear tonight and I hope my council, fellow council members are supporting me. If they don't, they don't, but I'm, I'm making it clear that I do not support moving IT over here or it being under one umbrella. So I would like to, for you to, I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and, uh, vote to approve this tonight, but I would like, uh, to see an open discussion with them on moving the IT position over, over here.
Absolutely, sir. That is not a problem.
And I will support that, Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, so with that said and understood, um, and I, I don't object as well. I think there's a certain level of, of confidentiality, uh, that there's no sense in. Uh, we say everything, there's positions that are confidential, their positions and what their relationships, but yet and still, some things do not still remain confidential. And I know we've had some occasions where somehow things have been breached. So I suspect that if there's not a, um, a movement in and out, we don't really have to figure out how it happened. We'd have one source to look at some days.
Exactly.
So any objections to that? If not, I'm taking a motion and I think you made.
With those notes, approval?
Councilmember, uh, who, Charazellus?
Uh, yes.
Okay, or I didn't know if Councilmember Pro Tim.
Yeah, uh, with those notes, I.
Do you have a comment?
No, no.
You want to second the motion?
Yes, I'll second it with those.
Councilmember Trejo would like to second the motion. And if there's no objections, motion carries, it's Councilmember Trejo. Well, he got, he got three of the four.
Sorry.
Okay, and I believe if I'm not, if you guys.
What?
If, uh, if that's not it, we went through fourteen, so, um, that concludes, um, our business for today. And quite a bit, and I guess before we go into reports, I think we announced, uh, all that. We wanted to make sure we closed in memory in the records for now. I also would like to, um, state that, uh, I noticed that we did note that our, uh, council member, Ms., Councilmember Perez was absent today, but I would like to say that, um, she's absent due to illness and I would like to make sure we extend her speedy recovery. And so it's just not absent, but for reason perhaps, I know the clerk did not know and it wasn't stated, but I think we were made aware and so we just extend her the, uh, message to, you know, rest and get well. And then she can get back here.
Yeah, we want her to get well. And, uh, see Carla, this is how fast meetings go.
Okay, uh, I know that we have a lot of activities of what's happening. So we'll ask our, uh, Director of Community Services, she'd like to come up and highlight. And then we'll go to any other comments or reports we have.
All right, Gabe, will you put my slide up, please? All right, so there is a lot of, uh, activity happening. Um, and it's only going to continue to get busy as we get into summer. So put on your seatbelt and let's go for a ride. All right, so tomorrow we have our Tiny Tots graduation ceremony at the Sandra Courtney Community Playhouse. It starts at six PM. We have three of our Tiny Tots who will be graduating and heading into kindergarten. I am their guest speaker, so if you want to come watch that, come on. Uh, Monday, May thirtieth is our Memorial Day tribute at the Rialto Park Cemetery from ten AM to one. Friday, June third, our teen center will be having a pool party summer kickoff event at the Tom Sawyer Pool from five to eight PM. Registration, registration is required and space is limited. Uh, Friday, June third, we'll also be kicking off our Movies in the Park Summer Series at Ferguson Park. We'll be showing Sing Two. Uh, the fun starts at seven PM and the movie will start at eight. Um, we are also working with an organization to provide a vaccine clinic that evening for our families who are present. So I will hopefully have some more information soon to be able to provide to you. Uh, Friday, June third is our girls volleyball opening ceremonies at Carl Johnson Center. Still solidifying the time, but I will get that to you. Saturday, June fourth, we'll be opening basketball ceremonies at Carl Johnson Center at eight AM. Medline will be presenting our ten thousand dollar sponsorship check that you did approve, um, earlier last month. And then on Friday, June tenth, uh, Movies in the Park at Floris Park will be showing Encanto. Uh, the fun starts at seven and the movie starts at eight. And then summer camp registration is open. We have limited space for that, but it will be running from June sixth to July twenty-ninth at the Carl Johnson Center, Monday through Friday, nine AM to twelve PM.
Thank you. Like you said, it's going to get busier as the summer goes on. And, um, opening with a really great movie, I love it. Watched it a couple of times. All right, so starting with, uh, Councilmember Charazellus, do you have anything you'd like to, uh, report and add to?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So attended the, uh, new business, uh, grand opening, the Advanced Auto Parts. For those of you that don't know, Advanced Auto Parts is now, well, Pet Boys, uh, left their parts department and Advanced Auto Parts is taking over all of the, the, uh, parts division of that. So I want to welcome Advanced Auto Parts of City Rialto. Special thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for participating. All of our, uh, Police and Fire and all staff that was there, thanks for making it a great event. And, uh, let's see. Uh, lastly, I want to wish a happy birthday to my daughter Elise. Tomorrow is her birthday. And she actually just got notice that she was elected the, uh, Junior Vice Class President to Carter High School. So she is very involved. And she did want me to let you know that she one day wants to run for mayor.
That's.
Elise. So.
Sign up now.
Happy birthday, Elise.
For mentoring.
Yes, thank you, and, uh, let's see, uh, and that's all I have.
And not Paris?
Well, it's not her, she was not, uh, no.
She hasn't expressed that interest.
No, no, Elise is a little more aggressive and she's, uh, you know, always on top of it.
Paris is working on trying to get a new car.
Oh, and, uh, yeah, so, yes. Uncle Ed said he was going to buy her one, but it was just all talk, so. And I also, I, I want to, uh, say, uh, what's up to our little buddy Owen. I forget his last name, Owen.
Napper.
Yes, he always watches the council meetings and, uh, so he, uh, he's very involved and he's a, a great kid and I just want to congratulate him because he will be graduating as well this year, so.
And there's another part of an announcement, did he tell you where he's been accepted?
No, he has not, but.
Well, he had a couple of offers, but he, uh, accepted an offer for UC Berkeley.
Wow, congratulations, Owen. I know you're watching and, uh, especially this.
Unless that's changed, I mean, he already had received UC San Diego, but I think he's kicked it to the curb for UC Berkeley, so.
Oh, I think I'd think about San Diego.
I totally.
Yes. So congratulations, Owen.
All right. And Councilmember Trejo.
I just want to make a correction as I started, it's Ivan Salsido. I think I mentioned Juan Salsido and I apologize to the family. Uh, but I also want to send my condolences as well. It's, uh, again, it was a student, um, who got in a, a vehicle, uh, collision after, after prom. And so I know that a lot of the, the students, family, uh, friends are all grieving and, and they, they just recently had, uh, memorial service for him. And so I just wanted to, again, send my condolences to the Salsido family for, uh, the passing of Ivan Salsido. So I just want to make that correction for the record. Uh, wanted also to thank our city clerk, Barbara McGee. We both, uh, had, uh, we're representing the city at, uh, the League of Cities, League of California Cities, uh, about, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and it was, uh, you know, we had a chance to kind of, uh, talk with other council members in our state. Uh, the big theme was, um, you know, having some of the surplus money go to cities to pay for some of the mandates that, uh, have been coming down over the years. To a tune of, I believe it's fi- five hundred million, uh, is that they were asking for from the surplus. Um, and so that was part of a big rally near the fire memorial, um, uh, memorial that's right there at the Capitol Mall. But, um, the other thing is we had the opportunity to meet with our, our incoming Assembly Member, James Ramos, and we were talking about some of our priorities, um, including making sure that he, uh, you know, protects our, uh, sales tax. Um, and so we had a good lengthy discussion about that. We, we talked about some of the resolutions that we passed here on the D I S, um, including our, uh, resolution against the, the upcoming ballot measure on, um, on fees and taxes. Um, and also, um, asked about trying to mitigate maybe some of the organic fee, um, uh, issues that were, that are going to come by. So, um, after a couple of days, I, I saw him also at another event. Um, he was talking to residents about local issues. Some of the residents, um, had issues with water. I mentioned that we have the CARES Act for water at his event. Uh, but, uh, if we can also promote the utility tax exemption applications as well, if they're coming with, uh, the CARES Act, because sometimes it's not just a temporary change that the pandemic kind of made for the families. Sometimes it's a lot more long-term. And, um, many of them would probably qualify for the utility tax exemption after the changes that are happening, um, with their income. So I just want to make sure that we help all of our residents, not just with the temporary kind of impact, but even the long-term impacts as well with some of the programs that we have. And we have a lot, and I'm very proud of all the programs that we have. You know, we're able to assist a lot of families, uh, with not just a mortgage, we're continuing with utilities. Um, and those are some of the issues that are continuously brought up in these kind of small neighborhood, um, meetings. Um, and that's, I guess, so those are our local issues that were brought up to our Assembly, incoming Assembly Member, James Ramos. Other than that, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank my daughter. I know we're thanking our daughters. Uh, I know my daughter, uh, she recently got the principal's honor roll, um, at her school, so I'm, I'm really excited for her. Um, and, uh, just wanted to recognize her for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this week I had, we had the opportunity to go to ICSC, which is in Las Vegas. Uh, the city manager, Mr. Fuller, Madam Mayor was there, I was there and, uh,
Councilmember.
Uh, Councilmember Perez. Um, we had a, a lot of people there this year. It's kind of been non-existence for a couple of years, so we had some good, good meetings. Uh, we had staff, uh, from, uh, community development over there and, um, I thought it was a, a good turnout and, uh, accomplished some good things. Uh, one of the things that, that I know the mayor and I are extremely proud of is, uh, the groundbreaking that will occur very shortly at our new, um, shopping center between the old Walmart and the new Walmart. We've got some exciting things coming there, uh, Sprouts Market, uh, another Burlington, Ulta, Ulta Makeup for you ladies and guys that like makeup. And we have another In-N-Out coming there. It'll be our second In-N-Out, not too many cities can ever say that. We get it, we're getting a Cold Stone, a Pete's Coffee. Uh, do you remember the name of the juice place? It was kind of a strange name, do you remember? Started with H. Carla knew who they were, I guess she goes to Juice, do you know Andy?
H?
Yeah, it's like Heineken or something like that.
No.
Anyway, there's a Juice place, um, are we missing anything?
Well, no, I think, uh, pretty much covered, is it, uh, I, I think there's also going to be a credit union.
Oh, yes, an Arrowhead Credit Union, so we've got.
Be on the look.
We've got a bank coming to the south end of the city, which is really good news, so that's, that's great. It's going to be a good shopping center and can't wait for it to get going. This weekend is. This weekend is Memorial Day weekend. We have an event on Sunday at 10:00 AM in the morning at the cemetery along with the.
Monday, Monday.
Oh, it's Monday. Is it Monday?
Memorial Day.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. On Monday at 10:00 AM. Don't come on Sunday because I won't be there. We're doing it with the American Legion. We usually have a really great turnout, and it's, it's good to honor our, our veterans and those who have left us on that day. So, I hope everybody can come out and attend. The other thing that I'd like to kind of talk about tonight is, I'd like to ask if we can get the school district to come and give us a presentation on the measures that they're taking to secure our schools. Because while we don't have control or authority over the school district, those are our children in those schools, and our grandchildren, and our friends' children. And I would like to have a presentation by them of what they're doing to secure the schools. The situation that happened in Texas is just a horrific situation. And unless you've lost a child, you have no clue or idea the anguish and pain those parents and families are going through. So, I, I think it's important that we do what we can do to protect our children in this community. Unfortunately, we have individuals that I don't know what they're lacking in life or what, what has happened to part of our society that they think they can go buy a gun, an ammunition, and go into a school and just shoot little kids. It just, it just makes no sense to me. I don't think it's guns. I think it's the way our kids are raised, and I think it's the fact that we've lost God in this country. And I, I think we all got to start searching our souls on what to do and start dealing with mental illness. And frankly, I think kids that are sitting at home all day playing Call of Duty, I just don't think that's a good thing. And I, I think we have to address it as a country. And I heard somebody on TV say that it's not only the politicians in Washington DC that need to start dealing with it, it's the politicians everywhere. So, I think it's time for us to step up and voice our opinions and get something done about it and get Washington DC to frankly get off their butts and do something. So, it's, it's just a sad day in, in this country.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I appreciate that you made that request. Because while we were also in Las Vegas, we had the pleasure of having one of our other elected representatives participate and be a part of seeing ICSC from the community college perspective. Trustee Joseph Williams was able to go and attend with us for the benefit of understanding economics and the relationship. And he and I were having constant conversations about the two entities and the responsibilities, not so much in the community college, but he also, as some of you may know, he works with our Rialto Unified School Department as a, I guess, as serving as a coordinator or representatives dealing with community resolutions or navigating through the school system and government and anything else. And I, too, would say to him that, you know, the incident had happened, you know, just looking at it. We talked about what else can occur in our school systems to make sure that somebody is aware. I know you've heard that, you know, some believe, well, teachers should be armed and maybe would be in a better situation. That may be one. But I think even just having a better, for me, a better understanding of investment, of surveillance within the classrooms and in the school facilities and having a way to notice, know what's going on and what may be occurring. We talked about this incident, but there's often bullying that happens. And it's so sad because before I left, I had a parent inform me of another bullying incident in the school district. And the parent was somewhat frustrated because the child reported it, but the teacher said she would inform the administration of what was happening. But her comment was that she would inform, but she didn't see it. So, you know, having the ability to validate it was almost like, for a child in an elementary, it's like, okay, so you have to go home and tell the parent, because when you say something like that, that means what? If you didn't see it, it doesn't exist. And so, I was talking to him about that before this incident and saying bullying is real. And to the point with this gentleman, when you hear, well, there were signs, there is a mental issue. Even the parent of the gentleman, she acknowledged even sometimes she was concerned with the aggressive behavior. And so, this month is, May is Mental Health Month. And oftentimes, things, there are some signs, and people choose to ignore them or they don't quite know where to go. But this was a conversation before the Texas incident. And I just think that somehow you have to have the kids feeling that they look to their teacher to be the person who's going to be protecting them. They, they look to the teacher to be the person who's hopefully going to show no difference from any child over the other, but they can go to them and speak. The comment from me and Joseph and I, the comment was, well, cameras will not, never be, that will never happen because, he says, the CTA would not allow it. And I thought, oh, really? What is it in a public space that there's a level of privacy that has to be afforded with any organization, labor organization, feeling that they have to advocate for not allowing that? I would think that that would be something that they should allow and would welcome and support. So, my thoughts on commenting on the other part of it, it was today, we are sending a, we being the mayor's, Southern California, there's a coalition of mayors in the Inland Empire. And just before I came into council, they asked if I wanted to sign on the letter sending our condolences to Mayor McLaughlin for the Inland. And I said, absolutely. I mean, nobody could even, it phantom, who has to deal with something like this? You've got a lot of people coming in after the fact, but oftentimes, it's the local mayor who has to figure out what's happening. And everybody after fact is beginning to talk about who did what, why this didn't happen, how come the door was locked? How come the door wasn't locked? It's not going to bring the kids back, and it's not going to bring the, the two teachers who also had their own family back. And so, my comment, and I said to them, I said, whatever this debate is, and, you know, there's constant debate about the rights to bear arms. Nobody's saying we shouldn't. But the other part is, the background checks, universal background checks. Somebody walking in, 18, anywhere, and being able to buy a, a, I can't even, all I'll say is look like an automatic weapon and walk away, something should be alarming or something should be raised. But for me, I just think when we start making some decisions that are based on our heart versus based on our head, we'll probably get somewhere. But right now, it's always a fight. It's always two sides. And I don't think we are focusing on what we need to accomplish in our, in our nation, in this place, based on what truly is in our hearts and what truly we want to see happen, not debate, based on our, the headiness and how we're gonna stay in political favor one way or another. And so, that's all I wanted to say.
One of the teachers' husbands had a heart attack today and died. So, now those kids.
So, now those kids are orphaned.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's the stress of something like this.
And if I, if I could add, Madam Mayor, our police department did go to schools today. Detective sergeants, lieutenants, and officers to meet with parents at the schools to make them feel more comfortable and calmer. So, that was a great, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And on the, on the district superintendent, Dr. Avila, he did send a letter to the parents via text messaging yesterday throughout the school district, and they have, he acknowledged that, you know, they do have safety and procedures and protocols, but they also reiterate the importance of if you see something, say something. And I'm hoping we can get more information on that when it comes, someone from their campus comes and presents to us.
And on a lighter note, the juice bar that's opening up down there is called Nectar.
Okay.
Does anybody know Nectar? Do you know it?
Nectar.
City clerk knows what it is. All right. It's a good juice?
Well, I believe along with all of that, we also have to report. I don't know if we reported it, but in the Renaissance area over by the Texas Roadhouse, we will be seeing a Dutch Brothers, and I believe that's something that also has pretty much been locked down. So, on a higher note.
And actually, the Dutch Brothers on the south end was under construction this morning, so they broke ground.
Oh, great. Okay. So, as we speak, we also had the pleasure of getting an update of the company or developers who are trying to bring in something on the corner of Riverside and San Bernardino Avenue. And so, it's a, I will say, a nice, ambitious plan, mixed-use and residential. But there's protocols as it relates to with fish and wildlife and dealing with the fly.
Best Western, too.
Oh, yes. And I guess we can state that yesterday, because it was our public subcommittee, Economic Development Committee, we met with the owners who are planning on bringing a Best Western. I think they said it was Best Western at a certain level, at least.
Plus, plus.
Best Western plus. It will be about 84 whole rooms. It's going to be right there on Foothill, just west of the Telecute Senior Facility, is about a one-acre lot. And they also have arrangements for parking that will be transitioning between the facility and spillover over into the Arthur's Medical Facility. So, the design looks really good, the interior and everything that will be expected, the facade. It's, will be a Best Western that will provide, I think, the accommodations of breakfast, I think, for people. But there will be no actual restaurant or, or bar in it. So, our, I believe our police department had already looked at the concerns and also fired their preliminary going forward. They're hoping to break ground, if everything's going well, by September of this month, I mean, this year.
And with that new hotel, we'll be able to justify that tiller that Chief Park bought.
Oh, yes, because it'll be four stories. So.
Also, by the way, Cynthia, isn't it your birthday on Saturday? You want to tell us how old you're going to be, or?
Okay.
But happy birthday.
Yes, happy, and again, finishing up my comments.
I gotta help you.
Well, yeah, you'll enjoy this one.
I'll be 27 again.
Good.
Again, okay, all right. That's good. Hold at that. That's a good number. So, in closing, I would like to, tomorrow, one young man who I have known since he was born, he is also promoting from Cobell, Cobell Middle School to Carter, I believe, where we're high. And that's Azon. It's Azon Rice. And Azon is one who's been playing a lot of soccer. He's, him and Councilmember Perez's son are good friends. And Azon also is going to be graduating on the principal's list with a total 4.0, straight A's. And so, I'm really excited. Unfortunately, I thought the graduation was today and it's going to be next Thursday, so I will not be there because I will be headed to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Conference in Reno. And then in closing, I would just like to wish, this is a special day for me. This is odd that would be on a council, we'd have a council meeting instead of a Tuesday one, but I can't tell you what year, if it was the 15th or 16th, but I think Madam City Clerk was there and Mayor Aquadeta Warren officiated, but today, tonight is, today is my husband and I's wedding anniversary.
Well, congratulations.
And so, I know, all I know, it was May 26th, and I'll check the records with the clerk and with those that were in attendance. But it was right after a council meeting that I went there and said, okay, everybody get to my house. And we got married and we, you know, did all the great things of bringing in our friends from, by Zoom or whatever, from Texas and one from California. So, we stepped into that digital world of testing the capability to bring people in to the room. It was an interesting wedding.
No fireworks.
Or, no fireworks. It was an interesting marriage.
That's Raffi's.
And so, anyway, I'd just like to wish a happy anniversary to my husband Dana. I think most of you guys know him.
Yep, happy anniversary for your, for your anniversary. Did he go golfing today?
No, but he, no, he, he went to San Diego to pick up one of my granddaughters who would like to spend more. And he will definitely have, he didn't get to go golfing, but he will be able to sport a wonderful new golf shirt that I've been holding and trying to keep finding out. It's been in a package. He wants to know what it is, so he'll be able to.
So, now he knows.
So, now he knows.
He knows it's a golf shirt. He just doesn't know what golf.
Oh, okay.
So, happy anniversary. And Marcus had the opportunity to meet him while we were at ICSU. And, and I will say, I think they found some common ground. My husband assured Marcus that I'm not mean to him. I'm just mean to everybody. So, with that, Madam, I mean, Madam City Clerk, is there anything you would like to add on the event? How about you, City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I do not. Thank you.
Are you going to be there for Memorial Day? I keep hearing there's a desire for somebody to go on a motorcycle road trip.
That's correct.
And the family has said no.
I leave Saturday on a motorcycle ride across country to Catlin, June, North Carolina. Should be back in a couple of weeks.
You know, just because I compliment you, you said you, you're looking dapper. Now you go out and get bugs all over you and ride all the way there and probably fall off the motorcycle, come back scarred up?
I hope to be back.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, anything you would like to add? You're good. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Trio and seconded by Mayor Protem. Any objections? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.